Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. Today is Monday, January 8th, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to observe a moment of silence in memory of Donna Kerr, a school bus driver who passed away on Christmas Eve, 2017. Thank you. We will now have the swearing-in ceremony for Dr. James Robert Kirk, who the board selected last month as the person to replace the unexpired term of Mr. Timfer, who resigned from the board in November 2017 for health reasons. At this time, I'd like to invite Judge William G. Hamby Jr. to come up and Mr. and Mrs. Kerr.
If you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, James Robert Kirk, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof?
I will.
And that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God.
I will.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I will, and I do.
All right, if you can sign. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, honor. Thank you.
Welcome, Robert.
Hi, thank you.
Now you get sworn in, now you get sworn out.
Oh, thank you.
Come closer to a mic, please. Next, we'll have the signing of the Board of, of the Code of Ethics with Board Attorney Brian Shaw presented to Dr. Kirk. Okay. While we're doing that, I'd like to welcome Deputy Brian Heinz from the Northwest Middle School Resource Officer. Glad to have you here. The board members were now ready to set the agenda. Do I have a motion that the January 8th, 2018 work session be approved as presented? So David Harrison made the first motion and seconded by Rob Walters, is that correct?
The opposite.
Oh, the opposite. Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes, it's six-zero. And I will note that Board Member Barry Sheemaker is on holiday with his family and could not be here tonight. So the first report we have, Mr. Tim Louder. Will talk to us about a tenure plan overview. And the sequence for the tenure plan is that we will start our discussion at our retreat in about two weeks. We will dive into it a little bit more. Staff will give us more details. But in the meantime, we do have to prepare a draft presentation for the county commissioners. Mr. Louder?
Thank you. Okey-dokey, we're on. As we said, this is a draft presentation allowed to, I guess, spur some discussion and some feedback from you before we go to the county commissioners. We actually have a presentation for the county commissioners work session on the 19th, and our work session on the 20th. So this is a kind of a spurring situation. It's not the full presentation you'll probably get on your planning agenda coming up on the 20th. Here we go. My disclaimer. This is a snapshot of the options that are open to the district. However, future decisions and situational outcomes may change or influence the redistrict plans that are present, okay? So keep that in mind. Everybody thinks it's cast in stone, but it's really not. Okay, our ongoing projects. Right now, we have Royal Oaks under construction. About $23 million project supposed to be finished in May 2018. It'll be open in August. Our PLC will be in construction this January, next couple of weeks. It's a $4 million project will be opened in January 2019, mid-year, which allows us then to use that space and convert it back to middle school seats, which we talked to the county about previously. West Cabarrus High School is under construction. Building pad is complete. They're digging foundations, pouring foundations, and expect pre-cast to show up in February, and they'll start vertical construction at that point in time. So it's supposed to open 2019. A new Southwest Elementary School is under current permitting and design. It will bid in March and be awarded in April and again construction in April and be open in 2019, so a tight schedule. But that's what we have, that's our tightest schedule right now. So Royal Oaks, right now, it's a 65% complete. It's, its condition air will begin next month. We'll begin putting our sheet rock and our painting and all those sort of things until your finish work begin at that time. And also, the job costs right now are currently under contract amounts, so that's good news. And substantial completion in April and final completion in May, which should give us about three months for moving in, which is very nice. We don't usually have that luxury, so we're kind of glad to have that in this project. The PLC, I say it's a, this is a non-traditional high school environment. We work very closely with our PLC folks. And we also visited several places where they had a similar type project. It's a very open concept type plan where we have six or seven of those classrooms or non-conventional classrooms. They have large roll-up doors that opens them up to the indoor court, so therefore it can be, you know, interactive. But we all do have a couple of conventional classrooms for, you know, certain things. We also have a removable wall when they have testing, so they can put a large group in for like when they have a testing for the SAT and that sort of thing. So, but we feel like it's going to work well. It does not have a kitchen, it has a serving kitchen in it and that sort of thing. So we hope that's going to work out real well. The meals will be prepared at Winkler, which is right next door to it and come in. Right now, I said, very open concept for 150 students. And we hope to have that open in January 2019. Okay. West Cabarrus High School, again, you can see the building pad and aerial photos there. The building pad is complete. We were able to get that going. Pre-cast panels delivery in February, as we talked about a moment ago. Student parking lot and mass grading will be completed behind the, that's where they'll be doing most of the grading for the next time, because they will use that as their lay-down yard once they be in construction. They already have the curb and gutter installed on the student staff entrance. If you go by Wayne Street Road, you can see that, that end. And hopefully get that under, under curb and under pavement soon. And then we have the Wayne Street Road improvements there under design. That design is almost complete. Actually, we're meeting with the City of Concord, NC DOT, next week to finalize that design and make sure everybody's okay with it. Southwest Elementary School, right now, the design development is complete. We are under construction documents right now, in construction. Got most of our comments back from DPI. We have a back bid advertisement next month. And then we will receive bids in March and then award in April. And begin construction in April as well, because we will need that full-time to be able to get that project complete by 2019. There we go. Had two more dates there, I'll roll up. Just to give you an idea, you know, what's next. This is a project timeline for our next two projects that were priority based on our last tenure plan. We've got a new elementary school, which is a replacement elementary school. And, and you can see by this timeline, you have to start pretty early in order to make this work out for us. And we would really like to get this thing started February, March of this year to begin our architect selection, that sort of thing. So that we understand by May and June, July, we need to have an architect on board to give us enough time for design to be able to give us that buffer. We haven't had the luxury of those buffers because we haven't been starting projects soon enough. We've always been pressing right down to the last minute trying to get a project open, causing several of us in here quite a bit of heartburn at the end, make sure that projects are open on time. The high school project, again, you say, well, you just now started construction under existing high school. Why do you need to worry about the next one? As you can see, the next high school is supposed to come online in 2022. We almost have to start by July, August of this year with our planning process and have a site pretty well tied down by mid-year so that we understand where we're going to build this school and get another design so that we can't have that full two years worth of construction other than having to compress our timeline. So I just want to make sure, kind of through that, and everybody kind of wonders why we have to move so fast sometimes when it's two years or three years out. And so that's, that's the reason. So, this is a, lots of decisions to be made. And that's where we'll come into play, the 20th. We have a lot of discussions about the things that are going to affect what happens for the next phase of our tenure plan. You know, aging schools, we've, we've got several of them we've got to deal with. We've got redistricting, obviously, that's a big one. That's one that you're going to have the most pain for, I'm sure. But anyways, we look at, we, once we start talking about redistricting, where's the next land acquisition? Where are we going to place the next facility? What size do we want those facilities to be? Those are the kind of things that we'll need to talk about and have a major discussion during our planning session here, our work session on the 20th. So, addressing our elementary schools. Obviously, we have three elementary schools that are, Beverly Hills Elementary School, we've had a lot of discussion about that over the last six months. You have a recommendation on that, but we have not made a final decision. Coltrane Web Elementary School, that's on the list, obviously, it's seven years old as well. And Arbrown McAllister. According to the tenure plan, Arbrown McAllister would be the first school to be replaced, next elementary school we build on the last previous tenure plan. So we need to make sure we talk about that and how we're going to do it and how that will affect then the development of Coltrane Web and so forth down the road. Our middle schools. Middle school, we pushed that back, project back from 2020 opening date to 2022, again, because they allowed us to build the PLC and then allowed us to open up JM Robinson, JM Freeze, I'm sorry, Middle School, open up those 250 seats there to allow us to delay that project a little bit longer, which causes us to have to split middle schools in order to feed the high schools. But, but again, that allows us two-year delay on having to build that middle school project. We are right now currently discussing where that needs to be and trying to acquire property in the JM Robinson district for that. Again, like I said, we're looking for land as our circle of influence. We need to be somewhere in that circle to probably make that project work for us. Not much left there, so we don't have a whole lot of choices there, but I just, still, it's got to be in that circle. Address our new high schools. We still have, you know, high school growth, population growth. Sometimes you'd kind of wish it was all in one place, but unfortunately, it's not. All of our high schools are experiencing some growth and some more than others. But as we begin to look into our aging high schools, we've got to deal with that as well. So we have a new high school coming online, go off for 1,500 seats. But then, two years later, we probably need another high school. Unfortunately, we don't need 1,500 seats in one, one single location. We need probably 1,500 seats, but it'd be in split locations. So that's going to be our, our challenge, to see how we're going to address that and, and replacing our aging schools. We also have the Glenn Center. I mean, obviously, the Glenn Center is a, a large, very historic building. We've been keeping it up for a long time. Don't have a lot of, you know, students there, but it costs us a lot of money to maintain that. So we need to look at some alternatives and obviously, you know, research some of those alternative locations and maybe sell that for redevelopment because there has been some interest in, in maybe looking at that site, so. So what about future growth? We get 551 students to our district this year, which is a little bit below what we rejected we were going to be, see. However, we, we feel like that the growth is going to continue between 500 and 1,000 students over the next three years. And you say, well, you know, how can you, how can you say that? Well, let's look at this. Here's our housing and growth projections. All the green parcels you see on there are units between 100 and 150 lots. These, these units, these subdivisions average 55 lots remaining within those already approved subdivisions that are currently under construction, okay? The yellow ones are between 150 and 400 units. The average is about 255 units remaining in those parcels. So you can see there's quite a bit of housing going on. And then the red, between 400 and 750. All the red parcels you see average 550 units, okay? So that, that being said, as you can see, if we have a build-out of, you know, five years, which is probably being a little optimistic, or maybe pessimistic in our, our case. But in that case, you know, that'd be a pretty hefty build-out. We would see about 2,200 students a year, 2,300 students a year. However, seven years is about 1,600 students per year, and 10 years is 1,100 students per year. So given that the economy stays strong and we see maybe an average of a seven-year build-out, we can probably expect over 1,000, maybe close to 1,500 students over the next four to five years. So we need to be aware that that, that's a wave that may come at us sooner than we think. Oh, I hit the wrong button there, didn't I? There we go. I think it still moved properly. Here's our timeline. Currently, the ones, the projects in the green are under construction. And you can see we modified the, the budget based upon some bid pricing and some changes we made to the project after we budgeted it back two or three years ago. We have the one open in 2019, and two of them open in 2019, I'm sorry, one in 2018. So our next project line is to purchase land for the new middle school and new high school. It's a big-ticket item, but we have to plan on the high schools. High school, we need the middle school property first, but high school property very soon thereafter because it takes so much longer to develop the high school, okay? The downtown elementary school number one, downtown elementary school number two. Well, I mean, I was rather generic there on purpose. Obviously, that's Arbrown McAllister and Coltrane Web. But, but I want you to understand that we do have two high school, two schools downtown that we still have to, to, to address what we're going to do about those schools. We have a new high school for growth. Again, a decision we're going to have to talk about and make on our, make very soon after the 20th, our retreat, which is, you know, where's it going to be? Is it going to be a replacement school? Is it going to be a new high school? And where's it going to be located, north or south? And then at JM Robinson, we have that federal school for the middle, the middle school. Obviously, we all know that has to come online by 2022. And then we have several capital projects, which are things like stadium improvements at both Northwest Cabarrus and Concord High School, and also working out the, I guess it's the EMS center. What do you, what do you call that academy now? I'm not sure exactly what you call that academy. Fire Safety Academy, there you go. And those are, those was funded by those, those projects, okay?
Tim, do we need to have a third piece of land on here for downtown elementary school? I know Arbrown, we potentially have enough land there, but do we at least need to put that in the projection?
Well, we, we, we were, but until we decide whether or not there's an option of, do we decide we want to go back on the cultural website and do the swing school concept and place it on that existing site? If we decide that's what we want to do, then we don't need land. But if we decide we're not going to go to that, then we do need to add it.
But I'm just wondering if we need to put it in there for the commissioners as a, to be determined?
I can do that, absolutely.
So?
Absolutely, it's a good idea.
That we may be able to save some money if we do the swing school concept?
Absolutely. But then again, we may be able to redevelop the cultural website for a better use if we had alternate location too, so. Both of them have their merits. And then in six to 10 years, obviously, need to purchase land for another high school, which is, if we go north or south, it's going to be the opposite direction from that. And another high school for growth, three years down the road from, maybe 2025, I guess. And then possible repurposing of our existing facilities. Once you know we have replaced some of those facilities, can repurpose some of them for another use. If not, then we need to turn those over to county for redevelopment. We had two items on there for CC Griffin and Harris Road. Those do not have auditoriums or performing arts in there. When they were built, they just didn't build them as part of the middle school concept. Our other middle schools have those, so we're adding those at those two schools. And then, of course, we need another middle school for, for alignment and growth that would match the new high school online. And possibly by the 10 years down the road, we'll have to have probably two more elementary schools. So that kind of rounds out our total demands for the next 10 years. So, our immediate CIP needs. Now, I'm going beyond my level here, but Kelly will probably chime in and help me out maybe, if I need it. Mobile classrooms, it's a big-ticket item. We've talked to the county a little bit about this. Y'all are totally aware that, you know, the, the new law in North Carolina required us to have 95 additional classrooms. And doing a lot of looking at our existing schools and carving out as much space as we possibly could, we feel like we probably going to still need 45 mobile units next year. Our challenge is not only to buy them, but to, to be able to place them on those sites where they're needed. So that's going to be another challenge, but.
And there's a separate agenda item later on in the afternoon that we'll talk about?
Good enough.
The detail.
Fair enough. It's on the list. Obviously, activity buses, this comes from the Transportation Department area. Ms. Pope, she's got that one for us, I guess, for new activity buses coming online. We have also 10 yellow buses for growth and replacement, those are for $1 million. Mount Pleasant Elementary School, we've got electrical service issue there. We, it was done with, you know, it's obviously nearing about 30 years old. Electric service has been maxed out and it needs replacement. Also, HVAC at JM Freeze Middle School. JM Freeze Middle School came online in 1990, so it's, you know, pretty much passed its useful life. And we have roof replacements at Mount Pleasant Elementary for the same reason. Obviously, it's been online about 30 years. And the HVA receives from Mount Pleasant High School. And all of those are nearing their, you know, life cycle and absolutely need to be replaced. So those are requests we have to the county for CIP needs for this coming year.
If you don't mind, let me explain this just a little bit. So in the past, the county had different thresholds. And this year, they've asked us to put anything beyond 500,000, 500,000 or greater as a CIP through their budget process. And then, in addition to that, they would like to know our immediate needs at their retreat. So their retreat is in January, and so these have been coined or as identified as our immediate needs greater than 500,000. That's why it looks just a little bit different than what you're used to seeing from the past.
I'm just wondering, because people will tend to look at a list in priority order. So the three activity buses and the 10 yellow buses are not necessarily in this year's budget.
Correct.
They'll be in the 1920 budget.
Well, they actually are the 1819, because this is for the new high school, and we want to be able to have the activity buses. It takes a year to order them and, and get them. So for us to have them on site for the new high school when it opens, we're going to have to get them this year.
Okay, so they need to be funded in the first year.
They need to be funded this year, yeah.
But if you were looking at a priority, if they said, we can give you $2 million, just throwing out a number, right away, what would you pick? Would it be to replace the electrical service at Mount Elementary?
So the only thing I believe is, is in order, and that's not a discussion that we've had, staff, would be the mobile units are the most important thing that we have to have right now. We have to have those, yeah.
So, we also have some expansion items for the budget request. And this, Kelly, you want to take this one?
I'd be happy to. So the county has also said, as, as we are in their retreat, they would like a highlight, just highlight of items that, that we believe will be on our budget request, just a kind of advanced presentation. And these are the items that we were confident that year, year after year. Certainly, we, we've had a routine that we want to increase our supplements to 8.75%. We also, obviously, are going to need to add teachers because of the class size mandate. Also, kind of another repetitive theme is the deferred maintenance for those items, $25,000 up to 500,000 now, so that we've, we've changed our categorical amount. The next thing that we, we felt sure that we'd be asking for is our mental health professionals, and then again, our technology devices, not necessarily in order, but certainly the supplements and the classroom teachers are generally the, the top two.
And this is continuation items.
Again, just giving the county advance kind of heads up on what they should expect to see on our budget request. Remember, in the biennium last year, there was a pay increase for teachers that amounted to 6.25%. Only half of that was funded, so we hope that the other half will be funded, but anticipating a significant increase for teachers. So kind of giving the county a heads up for that. And then also, we'll have the planning year for the new high school and the elementary school coming along. So that's the planning phase, is when we bring the principal in a year in advance, we bring the clerical in to do those things, that type of planning. That's, the following year will be a much larger request, but this year will be the planning.
That new high school does not mean that it's going to be in the Harrisburg area, does it?
No, that's a, and sentence there.
Right. But the new elementary, we're talking about the current plans for the elementary in Harrisburg, but not necessarily high school in that area.
No, no, no.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yep.
That's the ones currently under construction.
Sorry, I should have called it West Cabarrus.
I should have probably went West Cabarrus on myself, but, okay. Again, my disclaimer. I started with it, on the end with it. To make sure we understand that, you know, circumstances will change. It will obviously modify this plan over time. But we, it is a living document, and it's something we will have to change as, as circumstances change, okay? With that, we have any questions?
Board members, anything you want to bring up tonight? If you don't have anything immediate, I would ask you to, let's get anything back to Mr. Louder by the end of Wednesday, so the presentation can be updated and we can take one more glance at it before they go to the county for the high-level draft, so.
Is there a process in place for the naming of the elementary school that opens the same time as West Cabarrus?
And we, we do need to set those dates. So, why don't we plan on announcing that at the business meeting next week? Would that be okay? We'll put some timeframes around it. What's that? Not for the elementary. I mean, there may be some turned in, I don't know, but we didn't officially put the parameters around it.
And the sooner you do that, the better. Thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate that.
Mr. Louder, on the slide that talks about 26 and 27 million dollars and 75 million dollars for schools that are opening in 2022, are we talking about 2018 dollars? Or are we projecting for inflation four years in advance? Do those?
If you'll see, we changed downtown elementary school 26 and 27, assuming those dollars will go up over the next two years.
So those are 2018 dollars?
Yes, sir.
Is it feasible to project the, the higher amount or advisable at this point?
That's, that's why we, we changed the higher amount to 26 and 27, assuming that, you know, in, construction costs continue to rise as they have in the last two years, then we can assume that, you know, the 25 million that we bill one for now will not build the next one, unless we have some inflation numbers built in. I, I can't guarantee it's 26, I don't write that in paint. Just, you know, based on site conditions and what we get into, may hit me there too. But we'll have a little bit more once we get into the design, that sort of thing. But this is trying to give the county a heads up that this may be, you know, as you plan your capital financing, this is a number you need to plug in as a placeholder.
And to do so in current dollars as opposed into projected dollars?
Yeah, just letting them know that.
But it's al, it's already upped a little bit.
Been upped a little bit, yes.
But every year, you learn more, which is why we have the chance to update it every year.
That's my disclaimer at the very beginning.
Repeated, repeated very well, thank you.
And those two elementary schools, those are based on the swing schools concept? Is that what you're getting those accomplished?
Yes, sir. Obviously, you know, those are utilizing the existing sites. If you decide to purchase land for those sites, then that may be, that may change that, that number.
But you'd have to move the students off, off the site if you're going to replace?
Yes, sir. With the exception of Arbrown McAllister, which, you know, we, if we use the existing site, and there's 37 acres there, we would build it behind the existing school.
So you can construct a school while the school's still in session there?
It'd be a challenge, but we could do that because there's enough land to do that. We'd have to definitely modify the way they take recess and a few other things to be able to accomplish that construction interest separate from the school interest.
I'm sure you'll give us more details there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know, when Wyonkoff, the new Wyonkoff was built back in 98 timeframe, they literally put those beams vertically into the ground to separate and hold up the old school while the new school was built low on the same property.
Yeah, we built it so close.
It was fascinating, it was, they were very close to each other.
Yeah. You know, it's too close, actually, but that's all we had to shoehorn it in.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, Mr. Harrison? Mr. Walter? Mr. Powell? Dr. Kirk? Okay. Ms. Crapender? Any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so you're off the hot seat. Thank you. Next, we'll have reports, actually, from a couple of our board members. In, was it October, I believe? Three of us went to the North Carolina School Board Association Law Conference in Asheville. Conference in Asheville. I'm going to give you just a highlight of what some of the topics are, and then Mr. Harrison, Mrs. Carpenter are each going to give you a report. And I left a page of the board members' seats, just so you can see what the topics are. If there's anything in particular you're interested in, I think we should still have access to the guidebook, and we can capture those pieces of information. So the conference was a day and a half, or actually, I guess, three half-days, really, the way it worked out. There was a, one topic on teacher and principal contract decisions, a topic called Beyond Inadequate Performance Insubordination and Immorality: Dismissal or Demotion of Licensed Employees for Cause, which Mrs. Jones always knows it's a challenge when bad situations happen. There was an update related to transgender students, an update called Let Us Pray: New Legal Guidance on Prayers at Board Meetings. A topic on Title IX and student athletic issues, and if our district is at risk, they presented some kind of checkpoints for us. And I should say, Ms. Reimer was there with us, too. So we had some lively discussions. I was saying, are we doing that? Are we doing that right? One called Working With Your Board Attorney. What Makes a Good Alternative Education Program? Student Discipline and Alternatives to Suspension. The opioid epidemic, legal issues related to school bus safety, and that was very fascinating to see the film on that. The Board Member's Guide to Surviving Litigation, Student First Amendment Rights, and Responding to Challenges to the Education Programs and Materials. So, Ms. Carpenter, would you like to start?
Thank you very much. It was a great conference, and we did have some very, very lively discussions. And the one that I'm going to report back on, you know how I love safety, you know, that's one of my favorite topics. And so I'm going to talk about the school bus safety. And we've got some very interesting statistics, and so I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. DPI statistics, thirteen thousand school buses statewide, cameras caught, three-thousand-two-hundred cars passing, one-thousand-six-hundred stopped school buses in one day in North Carolina. Seven children killed by drivers who failed to stop for school buses in North Carolina in two thousand nine. In two thousand eleven, two-thousand-four-hundred-and-one number of violated incidents reported by school bus drivers. And three-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty numbers of vehicles committed violations in that same year. In two thousand twelve, two-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine number of violation reported by school bus drivers, and the number of actual violations committed in that year were three-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six. So you can see the difference in numbers. And one of the big things that we talked about, there was a Senate Bill fifty-five, which they are working on right now. There's still a lot of details that need to be worked out. But some of the things about Senate Bill fifty-five, it's not a criminal violation. There is no insurance points authorized on that. For the first event fence, it costs four hundred dollars. Now, second fence, this is like if you run a stop sign. And for the second fence, it's seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the second fence, a thousand dollars for each sequential violation of this ordinance. A hundred dollars late fee after thirty days. If the penalty is not paid, the DMV shall refuse to restore the vehicle for the owner. And one of the things there, this is a working thing that they are working on, and there's different ways that the counties, and you would work basically with your county commission. This would be something that would be done in your local counties that would be held at your local courthouses. And there's a lot of, you know, they're working on implementing this bill. The local Board of Education may install and operate automated school bus cameras without contracting with a private vendor. There's a lot of different things with this bill that can be done. So there's a lot of things they're working with, you know, working to get this bill possibly done. And so there was a lot of discussion on this. And the money could stay here, used for public education. So there's, this is money that we could possibly use. And so they talked about the constitutional issues of this. We would have things where we would possibly have to install additional cameras. There's a lot of different things. But this is giving us an opportunity. Again, safety number one, that's the thing for the protection, you know, of the children. You know, if we're saving one life, that's the big issue. And so this is, again, this was a very lively conference. And I think David's going to talk on the other one, the other one that really got a lot of attention about taking the knee. But again, it was a wonderful, wonderful conference, and we had a lot of lively discussion. And I think we really got our money's worth with all the information that we gathered, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to attend.
Mr. Harrison?
These conferences are always fun. I mean, it's jam-packed with, you know, lots of very useful information, as Ms. Carpenter itemized. And that's just a thumbnail sketch of the type of material we get exposure to at these conferences. Now, Madam Chair, I feel like I was being given an assignment like I was in fifth grade when I went to Raleigh. So I'm trying to remember, it's a couple months back, but what I've called is what I learned on my trip to law conference in Asheville. So came up with a little essay here, report to the class. But this is the fiftieth-year anniversary of what is called, and I'm sure our attorney will perk up when I say this, Tinker versus the Des Moines Independent Community School District, the fiftieth anniversary. And who to thunk it but students are people, and they have constitutional rights. And the Tinker case was basically a thirteen-year-old student at the time, Mary Beth Tinker, and her brother, I believe, who simply wore black armbands at their school to protest the Vietnam War. Well, that went all the way up to the Supreme Court. And it just basically boils down to the probably well-accepted fact today that students have a right to speak. They don't have a right to disrupt, right? Did I say that right? They have a right to speak, to believe, to express, but not a right to disrupt school activities. And that occurred in nineteen sixty-eight, and then four years later, the Supreme Court ruled seven to two. But it was a lively discussion that's applicable, you know, all across the country. And I won't go into it, but it has some recent applications here in the county in matters that we've considered over the last few months or so. But, so these students were, in effect, the court ruled that they could not be censured unless their speech was disruptive. And that's the basic take on that. But that students are persons under the Constitution, and they have rights which the government must respect. In our country, I believe this was from one of the rulings, from one of the chief justices at the time, they have rights which the government must respect. In our country, students may not be forced to express only those views that are officially approved by school administrators. And that was a good lesson on my part to learn.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Ms. Reimer, was there anything you wanted to mention? We enjoyed having you there, because you were kind of our check and balance on, are we doing this right?
Yeah, so it was a very lively conversation, as Ms. Carpenter repeated several times. And I appreciate the opportunity to spend the time with the board and explain that CCS is a great place to work, and we do a lot of things right, but we always have room for improvement. So it was a good week.
And then we had, in November, we had the annual conference of the North Carolina School Board Association, which several of us went to. That one, to me, is a little bit more of a mechanical. It's not as much lively discussion, but we did have the opportunity. I went to several sessions on CTE, technology, things that interest me. And we kind of get together at our meal or whatever and say, "Where are you going this afternoon?" So we split up and get different pieces of information. Then that gives us points of conversation later in the day or in future weeks. So Rob, do you want to share anything from the annual conference that you enjoyed particularly or learned?
That was a multi-day conference, but I was only able to attend on one day. And I think the sessions I went through had to do with marketing your district, social media, and we do a very good job of that. But some districts use that for recruitment tools and what have you. And they had a lot of examples on what Asheville is doing and some other, other school districts that were really quite impressive on all the music and using the students to put together some of these things. Also talked about the NC School Bond potential, which I guess is kind of on hold, but that was House Bill eight-sixty-six, but a potential of one-point-nine billion dollars for the state, that some of that money would come to us to help with the capital projects. And I think that was about all the ones I was able to attend.
Mr. Harrison, any recollections you want to share from the annual conference?
It is really information overload. No, I don't have any particular things to share about the annual conference, but it's just so much information, it takes you a while to digest any of it. Then you're sitting in one of these board meetings and think, "Oh, yeah, we had material on that." I keep all my stuff. I keep all my notes from these things and often go back to them to pull up the information. And it's always a great resource to go back to.
And I find one of the best activities at the School Board Annual Conference is talking to people from other districts. So we have our buddies from other districts that are similar size, or may have similar challenges with being growth districts like Guilford County, which is much, much larger than us, but they still have the growth pains. So it's always interesting to hear. I mean, we talk everything from which school attorneys are you using, to how are you handling X, Y, Z with transportation? Are you using two-tier, three-tier busing? So lots of discussions, and I find that to be very valuable as well. So, Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I agree with you. I think the networking is one of the biggest things. And I think some of their speakers, I think the one that really impressed me was the gentleman that, with the Superman guy, the guy that had increased, had got his growth up so much, and really was the Superman guy.
Inspirational.
He was very inspirational. I mean, I really, I mean, he energized me, but he had just made his growth, just doubled his growth. And he was wonderful. So they have some great speakers. I mean, I just love their speakers. But the networking, like you said, you can really get some ideas just from the networking that we learned from our other counties. And I think that that's one of the, one of the best things, where you can go to another county and say, "Hey, what are you doing?" Or "How do you handle this situation?" And we see what they've experienced. And we can say that we may have a problem that we've seen, or something's been happening to us, and you can say, "Hey, if you had that happen to you, and if you had, what'd you do about it?" And then we don't have to pay a consultant to tell us. And so that saves us money right there. So it pays for our trip. So, because we can always learn from our fellow board, you know, fellow neighbors. And so that's what I like about it.
And Dr. Walter was able to join us for the annual conference. So we got to ask him all the questions that we picked on Ms. Reimer at the law conference with.
Yeah, I would just echo that it's always valuable to get together with other superintendents and school boards and hear what other people are working on for some issues. I think we even talked, went to a couple presentations and talked about the teacher contract issue, which we're going to make a decision on, it'll be on a couple board settings. And so to be able to talk about that and then answer your, you guys' questions, what may have specifically is good and a very valuable time. So it was, it was well worth it.
Yeah. And I think, you know, part of us putting this on the agenda is not only to share with our fellow board members and staff, but also to let the public know, we take this seriously. We do a lot of homework. We do a lot of reading before we go to the conference, while we're at the conference, talk about it later. So not to say we're necessarily the heroes, but we do take this seriously. It's not just something we show up for a couple times a month. So, thank you. So let's move on now to the beginning of the items to be considered for the consent agenda. We'll have Kelly Clutz talk to us about the budget amendment.
All right. Thank you. I have three budget amendments for you this afternoon. And we'll start with the state program displayed on the screen. And as you can see, the first one are those normal budget amendments that you see almost every month, fines and forfeitures increase for technology. There's a small little adjustment for the bonuses, and so that was basically a calculation to benefit, so they adjusted that. The next one is the normal adjustment that we expect every year for the headcount for EC Children Charter School. The next one is an increase to our principal allotment, because the first year that you opened the new early college, we didn't get a principal allotment, because we only had sixty students there. And that's just how the allotment policy is written. The second year, once we've exceeded one hundred, we get a principal allotment. So that's great. The next adjustment is, we have two adjustments for our restart program. So we couldn't, the state wouldn't adjust our restart program until after the second month, the better of the first or second month, after those numbers came in. Overall, as a program, we, our predictions were pretty good, pretty accurate. We were plus or minus fifteen kids for those five schools. So that adjustment is the first adjustment that you're seeing there, not too much. Basically, we moved money in and out of restart program. The next adjustment is within the restart program. And so this was new, and I'm not sure where we were going to place all of our staff. And so I put them all in regular teaching at first. Then, as we got more information, we were able to move those and maximize those dollars, paying the high-low folks where they needed to be paid first. And so that's the adjustment that you're seeing there, all within the restart program. The final one is our adjustment to the state allotment for the better of the first or second ADM. We were projected at the state at thirty-two-seven-fifty, came in at second month at thirty-two-five-fifty-two. So there's a variance of one-ninety-eight. So that adjustment reflects that. Okay, are there any questions on the state? We'll move into our federal adjustments. You're seeing an adjustment to the CTE program, just an additional allotment, as they do planning versus actual there. Just got a little bit more money. Okay. Then you're seeing our PRC one-eighteen, that's for our EC Targeted Assistance Special Needs Children. Next one, again, is EC State Improvement Grant, specifically for staff development. The next one's just a reclass of those services. And then the final one is additional money in our Title III Language Acquisition Fund, again, planning versus actual. Any questions on federal? Okay. Finally, we have our capital outlay budget amendments. The first one is the budget request that we submitted to the county in October, and that's come through so that we could record it in our general ledger. The next one is the reversal of an entry that we did in November so that we could sign a contract. The third one is our phase funding. So the county has been doing phases. They'll fund a little here and a little there as their means become available. So this is an additional phasing for West Cabarrus High. And finally, the final phasing, funding phase for the PLC, unless we were to need contingency. And we are keeping our fingers crossed and hoping we won't need that.
Board members, any questions? You okay for consent agenda? Any objections? Okay, so that will go on the consent agenda. And next, we have our monthly policy visit.
Okay, we have several policies up for first read. I'll try to do these as quickly and efficiently as possible. Policy twenty-six-seventy is a required policy. It's a new policy developed to address the new statutory requirement that each LEA must be assisted by a business advisory council. Policy thirty-one-
Policy 3110, that's also required change, adds business advisory council in the third paragraph to include all new statutory language. Policy 7130 is required and strongly recommended. It reflects the elimination of lateral entry licensure and the addition of new residency licensure, modifies and reallocates information on emergency permits to practice, adds new exceptions to licensure requirements, updates terminologies in sections D and E regarding professional development requirements for teachers, and updates statutory text and legal references. Policy 7240 is required and recommended. Makes the policy specifically applicable to contractors, volunteers, and visitors. Modifies the policy to require a school official with training or experience to determine that reasonable suspicion, excuse me, exists to compel a drug or alcohol test. Adds requirement that the employee notify both their supervisor and the appropriate HR official if convicted of a criminal drug violation, and adds the consequence for violating the policy that may include reporting to law enforcement. Policy 4040 and 7310, staff relations, strongly recommended. This reflects existing state board requirements regarding reporting physical or sexual abuse of a child committed by a licensed employee. Policy 4240 and 7312, strongly recommended, adds reporting requirement for physical or sexual abuse of a child committed by a licensed employee, updates legal references. Policy 7510 is required and strongly recommended. This policy has been substantially revised to eliminate provisions that are duplicate of the state board of education policy and adds information about leave to teach at a charter school, region, or lab school. Policy 7530 is military leave, strongly recommended. It incorporates the state law requirements regarding military leave taken by members of the National Guard. Adds requirement that employees returning from leave must be applicable, must meet applicable deadlines, and adds requirement to explain military leave benefits to eligible employees. Policy 7810 is required. It adds a provision for permitting assistant principals to conduct teacher evaluations in limited circumstances and removes analysis of student work from student performance and growth data. Policies 7900, 7930, and 7940, all are very similar in their changes. So I'll only read that once. That is that the state board of education, if a teacher's criminal history is relevant to resignation, they must notify. It adds a response for requirements for inquiries regarding resignation and updates legal references.
That's quite a list. Okay. Board members, let's start just at the top of the list so we can get clear if there's any questions and if that policy can go to the consent agenda on the first reading. So the first one is the 2670 business advisory council. Dr. Kirk?
And I'm sure a quick question. Do our academies currently have business advisory councils at each of our academies?
Yeah, and Dr. Hill, do you want to address that? Is Rusty here?
Good evening, everybody. The question was, the advisory boards for the academies, each academy does have its own advisory board in our district.
That being the case, does this add another layer? Or how will we incorporate existing boards with this yet another advisory council, which serves apparently the same function of the current boards?
It serves a little bit different function. The business advisory council that's been legislated that we put together is actually an overarching advisory board for the whole career and technical education department. So it's not just for academies. I think the, there was an assumption that this was just for academies, but really this is for the whole CTE department. It's not just directed toward the academy programs.
Thank you.
So, and I think the academies are a small percentage of the overall CTE, about 5% or something?
They are. If you add up how many students are enrolled in all of the academies that we have in the district compared to the number of students that are enrolled in CTE programs in general, it's just less than 5%.
So you already have a plan, Rusty, for this?
Yes, sir, we do. We, we lucked out on one thing. We had Leadership Cabarrus last, last year, their 2017 cohort, they actually came in and helped us set up the bylaws and put a lot of this together before the legislation was even passed last summer. So we actually walked in to the legislation with a whole package put together. So I had our attorney put it together and look at it and see if it actually lined up with the, the legal part. And since it did, we actually had something to go by already, so we had a template.
Well, and one thing we do need to do, because the policy says we have to do this, the board needs to name. So we have the suggested names, and there are several requirements in that legislation and policy that say they have to express a letter of interest. And so I thought I would send you those requirements, see what's already been done, what you have on file, and then the board can officially decide. I don't know if next week is too soon. I'm hoping we can decide.
Well, this policy won't be in effect till next month, so.
Right.
So it would be retroactively appointing these folks.
So can we wait until February? It says it starts in January, but you know how legislation is. It kind of comes after the date that it says to start.
So I think when it was all put together, there was letters of recommendation actually part of that packet, so we put some of that together. But yeah, as far as the dates, we'll get it done as fast as we can.
Well, except, like I said, the board, I believe if we're going to approve policies, the board will follow the policy. So I know different people have recommended who are not board members, so the board still has to do our responsibility to it. So hopefully you guys haven't had meetings yet or anything.
We haven't done the first thing.
Where you've named anybody?
No, we just put the list together of recommendations, so we have not had any meetings, no.
And there, there are, I think, 23 names on the list. However, the legislation said there needs to be at least nine, so I think that's something else we need to kind of talk about. At least I feel the larger group you get, sometimes the less functional you can be on a faster pace. It's, it's a lot of people to get to agree.
So is there a recommendation in your proposal, Rusty?
There was, and actually we, we increased the number because of the number of required people that are on that advisory council. If you look at it, and we are working, for those who don't know, we're working with Kannapolis City Schools to, to put this board together. And so the number of required people would be upwards of eight people to be on there. So when you're looking at a minimum of nine, we increased the numbers because we needed a certain percentage of business people on that advisory council also. So that's why the number was increased.
And I've reached out to the Kannapolis Chair and Vice Chair. Hopefully we'll get to talk to them this week to make sure they're in agreement on the list and what needs to happen, so that we're not doing it separate from them, so.
Correct. Anything else for me?
Can I get, get a scenario maybe of what the council will do?
Good question. They are in advisory capacity. There's no fundraising, there's no decision-making per se, there's no treasurer on the board. It's a group of business leaders that come together to advise me specifically as the CT director on what programs we need to offer in Cabarrus County schools. I have a good idea going in of what the Economic Development Commission does or the Chamber does, or what they recommend as a, as a target industry for Cabarrus County. But we really do need a high-level advisory board to kind of give us some advice on what programs we put in a brand-new high school that's coming on. I know what I want to do and what my goal is, but I also would like some business people to help me and guide me and lead me in that, because we do have questions about equipment, curriculum. All those things come into play, and I really do need an advisory board to help me specifically about that.
Will the board, I'm sorry, will the advisory council discuss internships or student involvement in business environments?
If they don't, I'll make sure they do, because yes, that's a high topic. So yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good question.
Anything else on the first policy? 2670? Okay, for consent? Okay, 3110, innovation in curriculum? Any questions or comments on those? It's really only language change to include the business advisory council? Okay, for consent? 7130 licensure? And that is the one that changes from a lateral entry to residency license?
What is this interim principals? Is that new or is that something that's? Says interim principals, this is added to this policy?
Yeah, it's on page 2B3.
What were we doing before? Is this something we've got to comply with now or what is this?
The legislators this past time actually said that school districts can employ as an interim or to fill in for a principal position without having an active license. So regardless of licensure status, that was a legislative change.
So are we doing that now or is that something that's sweet? It just makes it, it just makes it easier for us to do that or what is?
Our retired principals still have active licensure, so that's not been an issue for us, but apparently it's been.
Oh, we're putting it in our policy that we're going to add?
Because it's mandated now.
Any questions on 7130 or consent?
Would our retired principals have to be out the six months or the same? Okay, before they could come back to be, to fill that role?
Consent agenda? 7240, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace? Consent agenda? Any questions? You okay? Okay, do that consent. Staff-student relations. I do have one question, Glenda, on that one. I'm curious, it always refers to certified staff. We can. But does it?
For example, for notifying the state, it is certified staff.
Okay.
It applies to licensure. But as you will see, some of the other policies that Lynn referenced, they were all connected. So it applies to all staff if somebody is calling for a reference and they have resigned because of something that's possibly criminal. The notification that we do with the state is just licensure.
Okay. Okay.
That makes sense.
So 4040 slash 7310, any questions? Consent agenda? Nobody's saying anything, so we'll go consent. 4240, 7312, child abuse, reports and investigations. Any questions or comments? Consent agenda? 7512, leave?
What is the required portion of that? Because it says you have required, and then all, everything, all these subbullets here say recommended.
7510? That's where it defers to the state manual?
But nothing there says required. Okay, I'd still like to put it on action just so I have more time to review it, because there's a whole lot of changes to this thing.
Okay. And Rob, if you can, if you can get Glenda or Lynn to see the questions, if you have anything. Okay. Okay, 7530, military leave? So to me, that looks like there is some clarifications really for that. It's not changing a lot. Any questions on that one? Retired military person? 7530, can it go to consent? Okay. 7810, evaluation of licensed employees?
Is that the one where it had at least 1,500 students? What does that mean? So this is, this is a beneficial change to the principal? Is that?
Beneficial to the principal because they get extra help.
But only if the school is over, has over 15. So if they don't, they're still?
That's correct. They're still doing, and they have APs to help them with their observations, but beginning teachers in years one, two, and three have to have the principal do the summative evaluation on them. But when the tenure law went away, now what we have are teachers who may be in our county for three years or less who are veteran teachers who are still on a full cycle of evaluations, which means they get three observations and the summative at the end of the year. And under the current law, that means that only the principal can do those folks summative evaluation. Now, if you have 1,500-plus students in your school, you can use one of your APs to help you with that level.
And that just assumes they're qualified to do that or they?
Oh, they are qualified to do that, yes.
Okay, well, if it's beneficial, I'm in support of it, sir.
So 7810, can we do consent? 7900, resignation? And this is the same language as the other one? Yeah, the criminal history relevant. Consent? 7930, professional employees demotion and dismissal? A lot of these are kind of related in their updates. Consent, everyone? Questions? And 7940, classified personnel suspension and dismissal? Consent? Okay. So we only have one to move to the action, and that's 7510 regarding leave, and everything else will be consent. Okay? Thank you all. Next, we'll have the policies for approval on second reading. Yeah, these were all consent for first reading. Any additional comments or concerns?
Did we get any feedback from anyone? Is there a way, maybe we can publish that better to our staff that these policies are out there and give us some feedback if they can?
To our staff or to the public in general?
Well, you're publishing it to the public. I understand that, but maybe, you know, a lot of this stuff deals with teachers and principals and staff members, and maybe they don't know it's out there until we've actually passed it if they.
So Ms. Boone sends it, just as you guys receive it, as soon as Ms. Burns finishes, Ms. Boone sends that out to our staff as well?
The proposed policies or?
Oh, she only sends the ones that have been approved, that's correct.
Can you at least let them know that there are proposed policies to review as well?
Sure, we could probably add that step.
Thank you.
Okay, can these all go to consent agenda for second reading? Mr. Powell?
Are you suggesting adding another district-wide email to let them know there's?
I'm not just changing it. She already sends an email out to everybody.
But it's after they're proposed?
It's after they're, it's after.
I mean, after they're approved.
Right, but every month or so, it should be some that are being considered, so a way to access that and to review this. Does that make sense or is it?
So it's, it's the same email, just added to it?
Well, however, I'm not going to get into that type of thing.
I think you're saying to send it out before they have final approval?
I just think staff should have an opportunity that, hey, these things are out here, that the board's considering that we're, some changes to this, do you have any issues with them? Maybe there is some feedback, I don't know, because I'm not a principal or I'm not a teacher, so I wouldn't, some of this stuff I'm not going to know.
So we could probably put them on our website and then initially send out an email saying they're going to be there from now on, so please check. And that way they wouldn't get, you know, a full email every month with those in, Mr. Powell?
Maybe just the topics that are, that are up for review.
Something. They're, they are, they are. What I'm saying to get to Mr. Walter's point is that we could initially put an email out to everyone saying, moving forward, all of our policies up for review will be on our website to our staff, so please check every month if you choose to. And then that way they wouldn't get a full email every single month. They would just say, hey, this is where they are if you'd like to check them. We could do off, you know, we could do some reminders in our weekly admin notes to our administrators so that they could also share with staff maybe.
Yeah, we don't need to clutter up the email system by sending all those parts out. You okay with that, Rob? Okay, so the second reading, agreed to put them on consent agenda? Okay?
Just a quick question. At one time, we had a backlog of about 75 policies. Where do we stand today? Maybe the state's dumped a bunch of new ones on us for all I know, but I'm sorry to bother, but can you give a recap of how many more policies we still have kind of in a backlog?
I think there's about a total 15 left maybe that we're going to look at in our next policy meeting, and we should be through with our fall. We'll be waiting on our spring, so we're in pretty good shape.
Right, there's another batch in spring.
No, sir. We're, we'll get another batch in spring, yes, but right now, we're in good shape. Not where we were this time last year.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda items, 6.04, submission of training hours. Mrs. Carpenter attended a mental health first aid course in October, and we need the board's approval to submit those training hours to NCSPA for credits.
Move to give Ms. Carpenter more than her due for all of the credit hours that she, I can only give you what they, I can't give you more.
I can give you mental health. I have certified in mental health now.
You, you are qualified to do so, ma'am, yes.
If I, if I took that training as well, what I, I took that training as well in September.
Did you get your certificate?
I think they gave us a certificate.
Yeah, they get, they will send us a-
So that's qualifies for, or I didn't realize I qualified for board training.
You can file anything that can be related to a school setting, so-
Okay.
If you want to go ahead and get that certificate to Ms. Monroe?
Well, if it qualifies, yes.
Yeah, then submit it for the next month. No, actually, we'll do, put this on consent agenda. For next week, okay? Okay. Now, we have, Mr. (inaudible), you should have just stayed here. For agenda item seven point oh one, consideration of the eighteen nineteen balanced academic calendar.
Okay. I'd like to thank Ms. Brinson, a principal at Wolf Meadow, for joining us tonight to discuss this calendar. And in front of you, you have a recommendation from the superintendent on the balanced calendar for the twenty eighteen nineteen school year for Wolf Meadow Elementary. Like I said, Ms. Brinson's here to help us answer any questions that you have, and I have a little bit of data in front of me if you need, need some clarification on anything.
And just as information, I let the board members know, but on next week's business meeting, we'll be having a presentation that Ms. Brinson is putting together with staff to give us some updates on Wolf Meadows' progress this year.
Progress meaning attendance, academic growth, et cetera?
I don't know what else in the presentation, but-
Is that coming next week?
Yes. Yes.
I guess the only thing I'd explain a little bit more on the second quarter, only having forty days, and the fourth quarter having forty-eight.
Yeah, our calendar committee looked at this at length as well. We took it to the calendar committee last week, and the days are a little shorter there, but it does meet with the holiday break. So the second nine weeks is very difficult, making sure that you get the exact number of days in on a balanced calendar and still include the holiday break that's similar to the holiday break that, that most school districts in Cabarrus County has. So we did look at that, talked about it at length, and Ms. Brinson may have something to add, she may not. I don't want to put her on the spot, but I think that was pretty much between the days off in November and December. They really wanted to finish their second nine weeks before the holiday break, which most of us would always say is the best thing for students. And so if you finish before the holiday break, then that's how that ends up, so.
Is it possible to get the presentation in time to look at it, maybe have some questions before the meeting? Is that possible?
Monroe tomorrow.
And I won't jump ahead. I'm sure you'll tell us, but I'm looking forward to hearing how it's going. Now, this is year two? This will be year three?
This is year two. We're at eighteen months right now.
Right now, okay.
So this calendar is for year three.
Yes, okay. And I'll be interested in hearing how it's doing, and hopefully some parent feedback about their personal experience.
Yes, I have some parents here for the presentation as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's the last question. Any significant changes over the first year or current year?
I think the calendar is a little different this year. It's definitely different than the first year based on what we learned through DPI about a nine-three kind of status for the balanced calendar. And so that's what we've asked her to do, is really work on a nine-week kind of framed timeframe where we have three weeks off. It's not always perfect, but our first year, we did not have it that close. So that's the only change. But just feedback from our committee, people that know a lot about balanced calendars, said this is one of the better ones they've seen. So we appreciate Ms. Brinson and her staff's work on that.
Did they have about the same numbers what they had last year, or had more or less, or do you give us those numbers?
Yeah, we'll get the details of the report if we can hold that for next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it was sent to us before, maybe before you came on the board, that their enrollment has dropped some, I think. I don't know those figures, but I don't know, maybe it'd be part of it.
Yeah. I think you'll see next week again. I think right now that their enrollment's actually increased, so, yeah.
Okay, so the balanced calendar, any other questions? So we will put that on the action agenda next week. And if you see anything else, I guess, you know, send in your questions so that it can be responded to before we vote. Ms. Klutz, thank you. We'll see you next week. Agenda item seven point oh two, regarding funding for mobile units.
Yes, as we alluded to earlier in the presentation, we have prepared this, is it not on? We've prepared this request to the county. The number that we've identified is five point four million dollars for forty-five mobile units. And if you do that math, then that's approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per mobile unit, which might seem a little bit high, and it is. So I'd like to just explain a little bit about our process that we use to get to that number and some of the things that we're dealing with. So with the class size mandate or law, we had to take a look at the number of teachers that we would need to accommodate that law. So we came up with ninety-five, approximately ninety-five teachers that we would need. So then we took and we looked at our buildings and our building capacity. So any of those classrooms or schools that were at capacity or over capacity, we, the assumption, the natural assumption is you need more classrooms, so generally, that's a mobile unit. So then we had that number. So then our CNI team has been meeting with principals directly to determine what other creative options could be used. There's a lot of things that we're considering. So you can take a computer lab and use that for, for classrooms. You can put teachers on a cart. You can remove your staff, like your guidance or some other type position out of a classroom and put students in that classroom. So there's a, you can add walls in certain places, remove walls in certain places, all of those type things. So those are the things that we're looking at. Some schools have existing mobile units there from when the capacity was higher, and we've moved kids out, and now we're going to need those again. So all of those items were looked at at each individual school. And for a couple of our schools, so we are so far beyond capacity, or we have such issues with adding mobile units, you may have to add a water line, and I'm not going to try to explain that out. Mr. Lauder will come and, and help with that if we need to. Or you might have to add a new telephone trunk because the telephone capacity would not allow that. So these are really large dollar expenses. The sewer line, I believe, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's for one school. So clearly that-
How much are the teachers?
How much were the, the ninety-five teachers? It's a little over six million dollars.
So six million on top of this five million dollar request.
So we're hopeful that the state will come through and, and allot us some encore teachers that will help, help offset-
But they're not going to allot you the five point four million for their mobiles? Is that correct?
Absolutely not. Correct. That's correct. And that, yeah, and so in that forty-five, we have the growth. So we had, you know, what was it? Eight, eight for growth and thirty-seven because of class size. And so because of those, those issues and that we're working through still with staff, we don't have a, a list of classrooms and schools and mobile units, but we have had a conversation with the county manager and the county finance officer, explained the situation, what we're working through and some of the obstacles that we were dealing with right now. They ask us to give them worst-case scenario, and we feel like right now, this is worst-case scenario, five point four million and forty-five mobiles. So we hope that number will go down as we make decisions to put teachers on carts or whatever those decisions are.
And there will be redistricting involved in this, or not?
We're not anticipating redistricting at this moment. I'll let Ms. Reimer.
So we do have some very challenging schools. I'll just throw a couple out there. Patriots is very challenging right now with their growth, as well as limited space. Beverly Hills is very challenging based on spaces, as well as Harrisburg. So knowing that we have a new school, and our county's been very gracious to help us with that, as well as the board, to get a new school on board in the Southwest, that's going to kind of make us, you know, hold, hold tight for one year. If we didn't have that on board, we'd have a real, real, real issue in the sense that redistricting and our moving students may come into play there. So we're, fingers crossed that we're going to be able to make it for a year, but may, may have to bite the bullet there a little bit.
I'm wondering-
That you're not doing anything unless you get these mobile units. Is that correct? Everything is based on this mobile unit number, or is that not true?
So Ms. Klutz is right, that the forty-five is worst-case scenario. We, I do want to just throw a disclaimer in there that growth is very early this year. We know that we missed growth a little bit with everybody projecting from the state to our demographic group to myself. And so we're really trying to dive in deep to see where that went. And if we were to show up with the nine hundred to a thousand, that could happen next year, I would, I would cringe at that number and could have some bigger issues. So I do want to caution there. But discussing whether or not you put seven mobile units at a school like Patriots and take playgrounds and create, you know, you have to do plumbing, and it's just very, very difficult for one school year. You know, we're, we're looking at close to a million dollars between them and Harrisburg to try to just put mobile units there. So we're looking at very creative ways. We're working with those principals. They've been very, very supportive, but the fact that we have a new elementary school coming on board there is going to help us, Mr. Walter.
Mr. Lauder, in your conversations with our legislators, have, has there been any interest in, I'll say, a waiver because we have a school under construction and we can alleviate the situation?
Yeah, I would say that, no, there hasn't been any indication that we would get anything different than anyone else. And so I think, as I kind of stated in the board meeting about Beverly Hills, is that all indications are that there was not going to be a compromise. If you paid attention to the news over the past week, the governors come out and very much spoken and said, you need to fund class sizes. And Representative Horn from Union County, who's in charge of the Education Committee, has kind of come out and said, we believe that will have a compromise. So interesting, since I made that Beverly Hills statement, the last two or three comments publicly are actually positive, but we all know that really negative and really positive, does that end up somewhere in the middle? And then we still are going to, you know, maybe we don't need forty mobile units, but maybe we need twenty. So no, there are no, you know, waivers or anything in place for growing districts. So because some places obviously have less facility issues than others. So I know Ms. Reimer was just talking about, we didn't, and what was presented earlier, we didn't have quite as much growth as the state projected or that we internally projected, but there was an article in the Charlotte Observer, actually, in the last week that stated that overall, in the state of North Carolina, growth was down, and that the state of North Carolina only grew thirty-six hundred students. So if you think total net for the state was thirty-six hundred and, and we had six hundred, that gives you a context that we're still growing quite a bit compared to, to most of the state of North Carolina. So all that's wrapped into, we got really, really negative data to say it won't change. I would say the data has been more positive in the last week, and then like always, we sit and wait to find out what, what the law becomes. And right now, our county has said, bring us worst case because we've got to budget it, and so that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, any other comments on that? So Kelly, you're providing a letter. It'll be in the capital plan, the presentation as well?
It's the, basically the same presentation that we showed you just now to the county at their, their retreat.
Okay.
Ask Mr. Shaw the question, I guess. If we're going to spend five point four million on mobiles and six million on teachers and completely disrupt the way that we educate our kids, what if we didn't do it? What happens? Yeah, do they just withhold the superintendent's funding? Is that it? I mean, at two, we-
I'm against that.
Well, I, I, I think we could pay that several years before we'd ever get close to the nine million dollar.
You had a consortium of fifty school districts doing something, then it'd be interesting to find out, but-
We're learning today how almost impossible this is to meet this-
It's, no, I, I'm not disagreeing. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous, but-
Well, then there ought to be some type of something that can be done.
Not legally, unfortunately.
All right, well, I'm throwing it out there anyways.
Madam Chair, a year ago, this board passed this thing called a legislative agenda, and I'm just going to read a piece of it here. This was our document from February and March of last year, which this board approved. Dr. Lauder's staff provided excellent data and excellent research, almost a crystal ball, and, and now the chickens are coming home to roost. The numbers are slightly different, but what y'all gave us was truthful and factual a year ago, and, and now we're seeing the, it's not the fruition, but I'm not sure what the negative word is, but we're seeing all of that materialize. And a year ago, our item number eight on our legislative agenda, K three class sizes, pretty much said that as of February of twenty seventeen, the North Carolina Senate is reviewing HB thirteen unanimously passed by the House a few weeks earlier. Cabarrus legislators are aware that passage of HB thirteen has been endorsed by Dr. Lauder and then Chairman Shoemaker and the board. And if this bill does not pass, we were saying a year ago, there will be an immediate negative impact on the budget of Cabarrus County. More teachers, and at that time, we said a hundred and four teachers, which would have been three hundred and twelve thousand, but just the principle is the same. And more classrooms, at that time, we said a hundred and four thousand more classrooms, which still would have been mobile classrooms at the time, and we projected eight million dollars. So again, while our numbers are different now with the current reality, Dr. Lauder, your staff predicted this for us a year ago. A year ago. And we're still facing what Raleigh is requiring. And every other district across the state proportionally is meeting the same thing. And I'm not sure how we're going to throw seeds in the backyard and grow teachers, much less get more mobile units, even if we get the money for it. There'll be this rush on all of the resources necessary to get these things in place. And I, I feel for the personnel and the purchasing staff that we have here trying to get all that stuff arranged. But it's been the case for a year. And I'm not pointing fingers or trying to pontificate or something. I'm not trying to be on a high horse. But Madam Chair, Ms. Furtin Ball was very instrumental in putting this legislative agenda together at the time. And again, I want to commend all the staff then and now for pulling together strong, solid, factual numbers, saying, this is the situation, and here we're facing exactly what y'all predicted a year ago. Long story short, we're telling our legislators the truth. We're telling our county what the challenges are. And I hope we can keep something like this legislative agenda updated and maintained for posterity's sake, for no other reason, because it will come true again.
And several months back, I wrote to Senator Brown, Harry Brown, who happened to be on my China trip back in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, whenever that was, and said that I would be happy to bring our CFO and our superintendent to Raleigh. We will come to his office, and we will open our books, and anything you want to look at that you think we've misspent, we'd be, because that's the whole crux behind this, is they feel we've misspent money, or all districts have misspent money. And that we have money. It's hidden so to spend on funding the mobile units and teachers and whatnot. So he did not reply. I'm not surprised, but I, I did offer to have a road trip. Mr. Powell, any questions?
Well, no. I just, I just, during the course of this discussion, there's also at least maybe one of the seven of us who believes that there is money in the budget that we spend in a fashion that I, I don't think is wise. I think that, you know, there's, at no point have we ever spent more on technology, and I don't think that it's showing the results that, that we all hoped that it would. As far as subscription-based, just waste over a million to a year on subscriptions that just last one year, and then we have to spend that same money again. So a number of other things too that are in the current budget that we don't get to act on. All we do is vote on the expansion, I guess you could say. So if you're opening all of our budget to the legislatures, that'd be great if, if we were able to do the same thing at the, at the local level. But that's a great idea if maybe we could do it at the local board level first before going to the-
And I will tell you, I pushed, and Ms. Klutz will remember, for us to zero-base budget in the, in the past, and we did take it down, and every department evaluated.
When was the last time we did a zero-base budget? When was the last time we did a zero base budget?
2010? Yeah, I'm going to say it was, I think it was around 2010, 2011. Yeah.
Just as a reminder, we're, we're 35th in the state academically. It is, is very troubling to me that we're having a conversation about funding when we don't, we don't look at that as kind of our primary focus. It's just hard for me to get away from the fact that we're, we're so low as it compares to our economic status.
So, we will have reports from all departments at the retreat. Okay, so, item 702, what Kelly just explained to us, that will be on our agenda next week. That's the only part of the 10-year plan that will be on for a vote. The 10-year plan details will then come at the, at the retreat following up. Okay, moving on to 7.03 regarding a demographics firm to help with the two major redistrictings we have coming up.
Okay. So, as we all know, Cabarrus County schools will be involved in a sizable student reassignment plan for the 2018-19 year to take effect in 2019, 2020. We'll be drawing lines for West Cabarrus High School and the new Southwest Elementary School. The reassignment could impact as many as seven high schools, seven middle schools, and five elementary schools. CCS staff is not equipped with staff time and/or equipment, or even the process to handle such a realignment. Therefore, it's the recommendation of the superintendent to contract a demographic consulting company to lead that entire process from start to finish. To get to the point we are today, we've researched other districts that have similar size and growth and have gone through the similar situations that we have. We created an RFQ. We put that RFQ out. Proposals were due to us on December 15th. We received two. Our current consulting company that we use, Davis Demographics, did not provide a proposal for us. They felt like the project was too large and was not appropriate for them for where they were. The two proposals that we received were from Cropper GIS Consulting and Business Information Sessions Services. A committee met after we received those proposals. We went through just about every line of, of both of those proposals. And it is tonight that we recommend Cropper GIS. And we'll be asking the board to, to vote to approve that proposal to support our realignment next year.
David, I know you've had some questions. Anything you need answered or?
Um, this will be a one-year contract. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. This is a one-year contract. We did go into a three-year contract with Davis Demographics. Very different request for work and the scope of work was much, much smaller. They did a 10-year build-out study for us as well as projections and a little support with our Royal Oaks boundaries. However, Cropper GIS will not only do build-out studies and 10-year projections, they will completely control the, the process. Everything from the maps to the community meetings to communication to working with the board to actually creating the committee themselves. So.
What, what's the end product, so to speak? At the end of a year, will they have a plan for us to follow through with in the second and third and fourth year? Or at the end of a year, will we need to reengage their services to continue working with them in the second and third and fourth year?
Okay. So, initially, they will do very similar work as far as the study. We're, we're anxious to see the projections and, and what actually happened within the projections this past year from our state. Then, they will actually do the realignment process and they'll, they will absolutely come to the board and give you opportunities to look at what they're doing. You guys will drive that process. And then, they will give you a recommendation or give a recommendation to the superintendent, who then would either approve or deny and give it to the, to the school board. Once that is done at the end of the year, if we choose for them to do projections moving forward, then we would have to re-contract with them again.
Could it be a series of, or phased series of steps? Or will we go whole hog, so to speak? I know that's our option, I guess, in some regard. But can you speculate on, on the types of recommendations they may provide? To us, not the data itself, but how to enact and go forward with the plan? I guess, I would like kind of a mental picture, if I could, of what they will, how they will recommend we proceed.
So, their, their process is very, very similar to the process we used as a district to draw boundaries for Royal Oaks. They will use all the data that they collect. They use census data. I don't know if you've seen anything, any of that in the proposal. They will bring that, that data to different committees. Committees will decide what direction to go with those. And then, we'll continue, very, very similar process to what you saw the staff do with, with the Royal Oaks boundary. So, you'll be informed all along the way with eventually getting to a point where the recommendation will come to the board. But you will have seen it multiple times and been able to give input. The board will decide what the criteria for the boundaries will be, what, what criteria is the committee used to get to those. So, you'll be heavily involved in the process. Staff will be part of that committee, but they're not necessarily a voting part. They're more on an advisory level for information and, and other, other points of data that they may need.
I'm going to ask David's question. I think, I know where he was going, is, for example, with the new Harrisburg Elementary School. We know it's going to relieve Patriots. It's going to relieve Harrisburg Elementary. Can we come to any of those conclusions earlier than waiting until the very end for a selection of maps? So, you know, we know for sure this close-in circle around Southwest Elementary is going to be impacted. And here's the slice. Is that what you were talking about? Here's the slice from Patriots. Here's the slice from Harrisburg Elementary, whatever else. We know that. So, it's almost like giving those parents an early notice, where they suspect anyways. So, I'll use the example at West Cabarrus. Laurel Park knows they're going to West Cabarrus. They don't have to wait for us to announce anything. But it would be nice if we definitely said Laurel Park is included in the scope.
Sure.
You know, just to kind of give that peace of mind. Yep, there's no question. It's not going to slide that far off. So.
So, I, I think if, if the board would want to go in that direction, if they gave that, you know, Cropper GIS that, those directives, I, I do believe they could probably do that. It's very difficult for me to answer for him through his process. But I would think that something as simple as Laurel Park being a part of this is, is very close, just as there are many homes that are across the street, pretty much, from the Southwest Elementary. But the process that, that he does describe is we start with elementary first. And they, they do the boundaries for elementary to make sure that they'll then be a feeder pattern into the middle school and then a feeder pattern into the high. So, you know, you could get some early on data about the Southwest Elementary School for sure, I think.
I'll be interested in the weighting of the criteria, sort of speak, so to speak, the scoring of the criteria that we use and, and how appropriate the weighting is, such as our Trigo process that we use. But they may be using a different methodology, for all I know. But they'll still be establishing criteria and weighting them in some kind of regard. But I would like to know how that calculation is done.
Sure. And I can, any questions you want me to ask this week before approving next week, I could, or before voting? Notice I like that positivity there. Before approving next week, I can certainly see if I can get you some answers, if there's some direct questions you want me to ask him, such as, "How, how is the criteria rated?" And a lot of it, as I've spoken to him, is that it is driven by what the board decides. You know, what, what is it that you want to be your number one?
And then, that particular, particular example maybe can't be answered yet until we see their detailed proposals. But thank you. I'll, I'll take you up on that.
Sure.
Yeah. The Cropper, it's amazing. Their process is, is pretty impressive. I was looking at how they did billings, school district, but no, up north. And their process basically took 10 months. And taking a look at our own timeline, they're projecting to be 10 months. So, here we are, January, February, and we've got everything staffed and decided by, what, January for STEM assignments and teacher assignments. And so, will they meet our, our time crunch of under by, by December this year, especially if they do the ground-up elementary, middle, you know, that whole process? We're focused on West Cabarrus High School as the closest alligator. We'll be ready in time to staff and get our students assigned by next year this time.
Yes. So, we've had multiple discussions. And this was actually one of the, one of the factors between this group and the other group. The other group had a much longer timeline. But in discussions about the timeline, he said, "Absolutely, you could make, they could make that happen. They've done it before. They've done it in a county close to us." And is very flexible with what we, what he proposed in the proposal as a timeline. And so, he would work with the board and, and the staff to decide, "What does that timeline look like?" But he had no concerns about that.
Could you, could you just give a minute explanation of what Davis Demographics did and what we're, how much we paid them?
Yes. We went into a three-year contract with Davis Demographics for $70,000. In the first year, they did a 10-year build-out study. They did projections and they did support with Royal Oaks boundaries for a sum of $40,000. Because of the scope of the work that we've asked for the next year, they have rescinded that contract for the other $30,000 at no cost to the county or to the school district. So, a total of $40,000 for 10-year build-out, projections, the report that they did, I think, you know, you were here when they came and gave us that report, some very good information, very similar to what we thought we were going to receive. I think the, the biggest concern that I had is what we've discussed several times tonight, is that all parties involved, both interior, Davis Demographics, and the state missed our projections this year. So.
So, they, were they the ones that projected about 1,000 students this coming year or this past year?
Yes, sir.
And we were at about 500?
About 551. And we're now up 100 from that. So, Dr. Lauder used the, the 600 earlier. So, I think that's a fair, fair number.
As a former math teacher, it's only like 40% difference. But I, I get it.
As math teachers can do anything with numbers, Mr. Powell.
Are we not concerned that we only got two people to come in with our bids? I mean, that's the only thing that concerns me. I mean, personally, if I got sent out a bid and my county was as big as it was, now, that's the accountant coming out. I'd send it back out and I'd say, "Let's try again." Because I, you know, I like to have a bigger pool to go out with. And I know that Union, and you're saying, "Ah, ah, yeah, but it's Union County. Hey, they, you know..." But Union County had some trouble with, I know they did run into some trouble with some of their zoning. And, you know, there was some problem. I don't know where the problem came in. I don't know if it was the actual, you know, you're shaking your head. Tell me.
Okay. So, there are not these firms on every corner, such as, we, there are, there are a lot of law firms. There's a lot of architectural firms. There's a lot of other type of firms. These are very, very far and few between. And so, for the fact that we got two proposals on a large scope of work, wasn't exactly what I wanted. But certainly, in our timeframe and with the expertise that Cropper GIS has, I felt comfortable with that. And so, after speaking with folks from the county you spoke of earlier, it had nothing to do with the company themselves. So, as we all know, realignment, redistricting is very difficult. It's very political. And a lot of people have their own agendas. And so, that's all I'll say.
Why are we pushing it so? I mean, we still have, still a year before it opens. Why are we still pushing the date? That's why I'm wondering.
So, it took, if you, if you remember, because you attended all the meetings for Royal Oaks, how long it took. And we started back in the summer and all the way through and, you know, into, into November. And that was for possibly moving about approximately 400 students. We're looking at possibly moving 2,000 to 3,000 students. And the amount and the size of the project, the first group I talked to that did not submit at all, said that would take us 18 months to do. And their process is very different. The second group says a year, you know, somewhere around a year. They do subcontract. The other group subcontracted, so that was some of the time that they built into their timeline. This group does not do any subcontract. And they do all the work internally with their, their business themselves. So, we feel like, to answer Dr. Kirk's question, we are on a tight timeframe, but it has to go and it has to go pretty soon. If we push it back much further, then we're looking at opening a school and maybe not having a, I mean, you don't, you don't want, you want to be able to have the kids create the mascot. You want to be able to have the kids and the families be able to, to be a part of opening up a new school. And if we push it too much further back, then, you know, it may be March, April, May before we get a, a boundary for that. And the kids would just leave one school and hop into the other without any kind of transition period. So, for me, as, as a planner, I would say, we would love to have the boundaries. I'd love to have the boundaries in October of next year. That would be ideal for us. But I don't know that we're going to meet that deadline.
So, with the Cropper group, are we going to start from scratch and pull together the data? Or can we recycle any of the data that we recently had from Variety, from Davis and/or the Beverly Hills effort that was delayed? I'm, I guess I'm going back to a comment I tried to make a few months ago, that we don't need to recreate the whole wheel. Do we have data that is current and fresh for Cropper? Or will they want to stop and, or, sorry, start collecting everything fresh again?
So, I, I would, I would guess that this company will want to start fresh. They may use some of the data that we have. It's, it's like trying to finish someone else's paper, you know? It's, if you use it that way. So, there is data that we have that, that will be very similar to what we gave Davis Demographics, that they'll be able to use. We will be working with Davis Demographics to make sure they're okay, to share anything that we have that they've given us with them. They, you know, we have study, what we call study areas within the GIS information systems that we use now. See, Cropper uses something a little bit differently. And he will create even smaller study areas. And he calls them something different and actually goes in and looks at each individual neighborhood. What does that neighborhood yield as an elementary, middle, and high student versus general areas that we did with Davis Demographics? So, it's a little more detailed. And hopefully, we'll point to some of the things that may have been the reason why we missed the projections this year as well. So, it's not, I mean, for me, it's exciting to see, what are we going to be able to get with projections? And can we figure out where we are and what's going on there? And then, two, a full process of realignment.
Yeah. One of the things that I noticed just between the Davis Demographics, which to me almost seemed too canned, like we didn't get a lot of customization in that report, kind of what we thought we were getting upfront. It seemed like it was very canned. Is that what you think, Mr. Powell? It was kind of canned data?
I voted against it.
Yeah. But at least reading this proposal and the fact that they actually have statisticians, data analysts, whatnot, it, this reads to me that there will be much more care taken. Like Ms. Reimer said, the small, smaller areas evaluated and should that area as a group go to this school or that school? And how does that affect the rest of it? So, it just seems like it's a lot more relational data analysis.
The reason why I voted against the Davis demographic expenditure was because I thought we had people on staff that could do a better job. I didn't think that there was a reason to go outside of our own staff. I think they're wonderful. And they can, they could have pulled off this 10-year build-out plan. But, you know, that's, that's okay. So, it's my understanding that they are sending us 40,000 back, or we're not paying 40,000 of that 70, 30. We're only paying 40,000. They opted out of the contract, or we fired them?
No, we did not fire them. What we did was had a conversation with them about what the scope of the work would be in the next year. So, the $30,000 that we had left in the next two years, what, was going to be spent supporting redistricting and realignment. When they saw what we needed, they said, that, that, I mean, obviously, $15,000 wouldn't be 10 hours of work for them probably, knowing that we wanted someone to come in and completely lead the process. So, they decided not to submit a proposal and agreed that they would rescind the last two years of a contract. So, no charge to us. So, no, we did not fire them. We had a conversation and he agreed that they would not be the person to do that job in the next two years. So. And they had not done any work for the next two years. So. And, and moving forward, just for this, for the board to understand, you know, we may come back one day and say, "We want Davis Demographics to do something else for us." We'll see. Just to Mr. Harrison's point, moving forward. And, and I would say, guys, I really appreciate the support for our, my department. But this size and scope of work is amazingly large. It is not just mathematical and is not just a few hours. It is massive. And it is something that this department, including the brains of Tim Lauder and the hard work of Joe Gomez and everyone else, we're, we're not built. We don't have the site. We just don't have the resources. So, I say that very strongly.
Mr. Walter?
I still get a bad taste in my mouth. $150,000. $150,000. What can we do with that to help our kids? And what, what can we do to help our students? I don't really think, I mean, there's a lot of work involved. Don't get me wrong. I don't really think, I mean, there's a lot of work involved, don't get me wrong, and your staff did a wonderful job with the Royal Oaks. This is not that difficult of a project, I don't think, for the high school level. I mean, you're talking, you've got a, you've got a location for a school, it's where it's going to be. So, the place you take kids from is you take them from Robinson, you take them from Northwest. They've got to go there. You've got to fill those seats, and where are you filling those seats? You're filling those seats from Cox Mill that's overflowing, and you're filling those empty seats from Hickory Ridge. I mean, those, it's not that complicated of a project. It's a project, not saying that it's not, but $150,000 is a bad taste in my mouth that's going elsewhere. I think there's got to be another option here, especially during the, what we just talked about, we've got to come up with, asking the county to come up with millions of dollars that we don't have already for this classroom stuff. I'm just having a hard time with that. I think there's got to be a better option than going to have an outside consultant do this stuff without even trying first.
So, I respect that. I would say that it's not just moving a few here, we have major growth issues in two opposite ends of our county, major growth issues.
I didn't want them to make it that simple, but it is, it's not as complicated as we're trying to make it out to be.
I think it's actually more complicated personally, when I look at the numbers and the whole county shift.
How much would you pay?
What's that?
How much would you pay them? More than $150?
No, I mean, I think that's a fair price, knowing what technology statistician analysts make, and we're not, that includes their loaded salary, that's their benefits and everything. If we hired two staff members, we would get to that number with their benefits added on to it, so, for one a year. I think we would, so. And board members, you know how painful redistricting is, to have it?
The problem, you mentioned relational, the problem that I had with the Royal Oaks thing was the relational piece anyway. You know, the, it was said a number of times that, you know, to close that school and decide boundary-wise where kids would go is, was a relatively simple thing, but to not relate to the parents and people of that community, I think that was, that was kind of what we missed. So, you know, I don't think a consulting firm is going to fix that for this go-around, you know, to hear that they're going to hold community meetings, and I don't get excited about that at all. I don't know that a consulting firm working as a, say what now? From somewhere else, I guess, I don't, I don't know where they're from, but they might be from Concord. Hopefully, they're from Concord, that might sway my decision. Where are they from?
Delaware, Ohio.
Delaware, Ohio.
Fort Mill, also, Mr. McKibben, Dr. McKibben is from Fort Mill, and they have done at least two school districts in North Carolina, six in South Carolina, and they've done more work than any other demographic planning group in this area than anyone across the country.
Okay, well, that's, that's great, but anyway, I don't, I don't trust them to run the community meetings any, you know, any better than our current staff, so that's a big piece for me.
But I believe we're saying that poor Ms. Gomez and others have tried to do this in the past, and we do have experience with current staff, and it's hard to ask people to be miracle workers when they are constrained by what they normally do on top of being expected to be a demographer, which is a specialized area of expertise that just doesn't come very easily, I would suspect, regardless of what their other many skills and talents might happen to be. But I think we've tried it before with current staff, is what I've been hearing over the last three or four years.
Can I just weigh in a little, just want to say that I think some of the points have been made, that the Royal Oaks and Beverly Hills situation, in many ways, moving students is a fairly simple one, as far as where you can pull them from. I don't mean it's a simple process, but just meaning where it can be done, the, and what that did during the time is it pulls Ms. Reimer, it pulls Ms. Moll, it pulls Ms. Gomez, it pulled Ms. Lauder, it pulls Tim Lauder, all of those people out of the jobs that they're doing for months. I mean, we ultimately, like she said, started, and for a five-month period, when you're in those meetings for, you know, half of the week, then when a principal's calling for support, Ms. Reimer's not available to be able to help them. So, it was a major pull away from other duties while we worked on it, and it was, the scope of this is much, much, much bigger than anything we did with Royal Oaks. So, what becomes like, you know, this neighborhood probably has to go here, and this neighborhood probably has to go here, everything that we do with this high school will be, to some degree, what the board determines, like, are we going to take 400 students from Cox Mill, are we going to take 300, and what street will that be? And so, well, let me see what that map looks like, and board member says, let me see what that map, and what if we do that, and suddenly, just to generate the maps is three days' worth of work and then eliminating. So, from our perspective, it's just, we, if, if the demographic proposal, if we don't hire the demographic group, we do not have the manpower internally to do an elementary school realignment that may involve four or five schools, a high school realignment that very well may involve all of our high schools, six or seven high schools, and then maybe some form of, you know, advisement on the Royal Oaks situation too. So, what it will take to pull off those within one calendar year, which is really what we're looking at, we just don't have the staff, it's not possible for them to be able to do their job. So, if this is not the answer, then we probably have to have another answer.
Okay, any other questions? You still have some time to ask questions this week if you come up with something else before next Monday, but asking a question also bears the responsibility of having an alternate solution, so see what you can come up with. Okay, the next agenda item is 7.04, for our, this is a board-initiated discussion, as we promised the folks who live in this temporary Royal Oaks to Mount Pleasant Elementary redistricting area, we promised them we would bring it up again in January. So, I sent you all a couple maps, and, I don't know, Michael, can we project the, I just sent you an email with the map in it, can you give, I'm not sure how we can get it projected, what laptop that's running on, you can put it up? Okay. So, the first thing, I guess, for us to really talk about, and staff does not recommend changing the boundary, but rather having the students go back to Royal Oaks. However, I think staff is open to us talking about this and perhaps leaving the elementary school students at Mount Pleasant Elementary. So, he'll, he's going to bring up the map here just so we can look at it. This is a limited redistricting, it is only the specific streets where, they brought it up on the monitors now, to the right of Old Salisbury Road, so the blue shading on the far right is Mount Pleasant Elementary's boundary, that shading within the red lines is the temporary redistricting from Royal Oaks to Mount Pleasant, and we're suggesting only the rightmost road, SAP Road, the, where's Gregory Road? It's up off of, off of Irish Potato, up in the far upper right. But anything along that red line, Old Salisbury, Concord Road, both sides would stay in the Royal Oaks boundary. We currently have, according to transportation, we have buses that are going up and down that road because it is a main artery, so they could support allowing the students off of Gregory, Irish Potato, SAP, and some of those smaller, you can see the smaller streets in that section to the right of Old Salisbury. I think I sent you the list, it was something like 24 current students, four of whom will be graduating from Concord High School, so that's the current number of students in that area that'll be affected. So, if we only look at the elementary school, and at this point in time, saying those students in that area may stay at Mount Pleasant Elementary, so first of all, is there an interest in doing, making any part of this permanent? And then there's a number of questions I think we need to kind of walk through. David?
Permanent sounds permanent.
Well, as permanent as redistricting occurs.
Was there a discussion of making this temporary but allowing hardship appeals?
So, you're saying leave it temporary, but if they want to stay at Mount Pleasant, they can stay and we would provide transportation?
I'm asking for a full discussion of the options.
So, some of the questions that I made up a list here to talk about, my understanding is that the parent petitions represented all but one of the families from the Gregory and SAP Roads area. The other parent emailed us, who did not agree to that, those petitions, and said she was most concerned about letting her high school, middle school and high school students stay at Concord Middle and High, I think that's easy to accommodate.
Yeah, the one that wanted to stay, would they be able to stay, the one that wanted to stay?
At Concord Middle and High?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fairly easy, that's where transportation said that's not a problem with buses, because they're going up to that, the county line anyways, coming back down to Royal Oaks and Concord Middle, Concord High, so. Do we talk about only elementary redistricting for this particular area? Because Mount Pleasant Elementary has grandfathered mobile units, we have not removed them because we can't put them back, so we've left them there. And looking at, this is only 20 students total for all grade levels, it's a small number of elementary, even small when you do the subset of the K3 for the class size, it's a very small number. So, do we make this only elementary, or do we complete the feeder district flow with Mount Pleasant Middle and High School? The challenge with that is, the high school could come into play, we don't think it will be, but it could come into play with the high school redistricting as we shift the county to converge on the new high school.
That far out, I don't see how in the world it could.
It wouldn't accept it's Concord High School now, and so if we have to do a little bit of a shift into Concord, out of Concord.
If you call something permanent, you're obligating future boards to continue.
Well, put it this way, make it into the normal district.
It's an assumption.
Yeah.
I would be interested in seeing if it's a permanent elementary and leave it at that until get the demographic study back to make it permanent for elementary.
Yeah, but you may have some siblings is what I'm worried about, and I tell you, I'd like to give some of those children, they've been in such flux, I'd like to give them some stability. It is not fair, we're supposed to be about the children and trying to give them some stability, and they have been just like this.
So, are you saying to leave them at Mount Pleasant Elementary, those who are there?
Yes, and to leave, and to give them, do that, but then, what I'm saying, they should, they can have some siblings, let's get their families settled and let them, they just want to stay in Mount Pleasant, they're closer to Mount Pleasant.
Except not to the middle school and high school, that's the challenge. They're closer to Mount Pleasant Elementary, but not to the middle school and high school versus Concord Middle and High, so.
I don't think that's true, I think they're closer to Mount Pleasant. They're closer to Mount Pleasant.
No, Middle and High are a little bit further.
Is the fear that if we approve this change and grandfather those that would like to stay at Concord and provide transportation, that we're going to have more that all of a sudden come out of the woodwork and want to do that? Is that a real concern?
Just this limited area east of Concord, or Salisbury, Concord.
Okay, so it's got.
It's not an open area.
They're up there and they're not letting themselves be.
Yeah, SAP Road's up front.
Old Salisbury is SAP.
Right side of Old Salisbury.
Everything to the right of Old Salisbury, but not including Old Salisbury.
But again, now, we are letting those, there's two that want to stay at, and there's no problem for those two that want to stay.
No.
Now, are they, are they just doing the regular exclusion, so they, they're okay?
Well, they would be grandfathered for their Concord District.
Throughout their K-12 education, correct? Since we're already going up to Concord.
These two in particular, the other children in that family are at program choice of Beverly Hills, so that's not an issue. It's the Concord, the desire to stay at Concord Middle and High.
Would this require a yearly hardship application? Would families have to go through a yearly process?
Well, that's what the staff explains, that they need to account for students who are out of district, so it's, would it be an automatic approval? It would just be indicate your choice.
So, if you draw the boundary and it's a quasi-permanent boundary, it's the boundary from Mount Pleasant, they would not be required. If they're in the boundary from Mount Pleasant and want to go to Concord, then yes, we would ask them to fill it out, but it would be approved based on board direction.
And that won't fall through the cracks somehow?
No, all that, we do, no. And the only reason why we ask them to do that is so that we can track where students are and why they're there.
They would have to go through the paperwork.
Yes.
Not appeal.
That also asks the family for a commitment, just like a program choice student.
But they get a.
You don't get to go up to the first day of school and decide, I want to go here, I want to go there, you file where you're committed to go to, so.
But do they get transportation? In one instance, the mother can take one child, but the other one has to have transportation. Would they have the, can they get on that school bus that's going to Concord?
So, we did have this discussion as, as we were going through this, and there's bus, there are buses for both Royal Oaks and Mount Pleasant in that general area, so transportation felt like it was doable.
So, elementary is completely doable. I think we get into more of a challenge if we say redistrict the middle school and high school too, in that area. And I'd almost rather let it sit until the middle school and high school, until we go through the redistricting process this next year. So, Rob, your thoughts? Your what? With, elementary only? Okay, so the kids who are at Mount Pleasant will stay at Mount Pleasant through their elementary career? Well, it's 20 total, it's 24 total counting the seniors in that whole east section.
12th graders.
12th graders. Right, what I'm saying, elementary was like 13 or something, it was like a really small number.
Well, what if they have children that's going to Mount Pleasant now, at the other levels, do they get to stay there?
They're not there now at the other levels, I don't think. We have that chart, let me see. So, Mount Pleasant Elementary, there's no Mount Pleasant, but there's a Mount Pleasant Middle, that's Old Salisbury, that's not going to change, that must have been some other reason, some other hardship transfer or something. Yeah, there are no other Mount Pleasant, it's all Mount Pleasant Elementarys.
So, if we did the elementary, they're okay, and then we can change it when we do the other?
I think then we look, we have this area included, just as a question mark for the demographers, and say, does it make sense based on whatever criteria they're using, that we change that to the high school flow, to middle school and high school flow? Vince, you okay with Mount Pleasant, the elementary, making that quasi-permanent as Dr. Kirk said?
I'm making a motion, I do it now.
Well, no, let's wait till next week, because Barry's not here.
Okay, so, because we need to write this up, so that it's very clear what it is and is not, so Lynn, can you help us with that? So, it would be only the students affected by the Royal Oaks temporary redistricting to the east that are in the area, east of Old Salisbury, Concord Road, but not including that road. Who would be included in the district to go to Mount Pleasant Elementary?
Is this area already districted for Mount Pleasant Middle School and High School?
Now, Mount Pleasant doesn't start until that rightmost bluish-green color.
So, we're, we're not, we're breaking up them zonal-wise from elementary to middle and high school by that proposal, if it doesn't, if we don't change it?
Yes, all I'm suggesting is that maybe we wait until we do the high school redistricting, because that's going to possibly affect some middle school feeders too, and make sure we're good, so we don't juggle them again in a year.
I think we go ahead and make it for Middle and High, I would support going ahead and make it for Middle and High, grandfather those in, be done with it, we don't have to come back to this area for the Middle and High, we've got plenty of other fires to put out around the county, just be done with it.
Not significantly, no.
I'd do the same thing, I'd go Middle and High too.
Okay, so, then we need to, I'll say make sure we have kind of all the elements, but I'll work with Ms. Reimer on that.
Just do all three of them.
Yeah, we do all three for that limited area, like I said, right now it's a total of 24 students. of 24 students. There'll be a give and take on new kindergartners versus graduating seniors, as far as the, the whole picture. But how long do we give transportation to any exceptions who want to stay at Concord? My suggestion is only for the current students. If somebody wants to have their exception outside of not going to the Mount Pleasant feeder district, we would grant them transportation only for the current, current students at the current grade level, which is what we normally do with redistricting. And I mean elementary, middle, high, as in those pockets.
If we go all three.
So, for example, if a parent wants to keep their child at Concord Middle, and they're in seventh grade, they would have it for eighth, transportation for eighth grade, and then they would not have transportation to continue to Concord High.
Which is usually how it's done.
Yeah. That's usually how we, we have done redistricting, is only to the next break of grade level.
Right. There's too few of them all. The numbers are small.
Yeah. Is that sound reasonable?
For the ones that want to stay at Concord, because there's only two of them that want to stay.
That we know, we know of, yeah. But like I said, we would provide transportation until they have that break in grade level. Okay. So, we'll, we can, someday this week, we can talk and make sure we have all the [inaudible]. There you go. The Robert Clutt School redistricting. He taught me everything I know. Okay. So, that is our last item for the agenda. And just a reminder to those present in our viewing audience, that our business meeting will be on Tuesday, January 16th, one day delay due to the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Weekend. So, call for motions to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Oh, wait. Who said first?
Robert got, got a jump on it. He got his first motion.
Dr. Kirk made the motion? And I, I will tell you, that's somewhat historical, that the rookie does the, the motion to adjourn. So, thank you all, and have a good evening.